Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board meeting of May 5, 2022. Please join me in a salute to the board.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and the citizens for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the same justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2022 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk posted on the township's website, and here available at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents have been made available on the Township Civic Clerk Portal, and complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. With that, may I have a roll call of planning board members and township board professionals?
So, does Mr. Sanders meet his expectations, Mr. Wagner?
Here.
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 Mayman Delcor.
Here.
Merrill Pani.
Here.
Mike Scherduyan.
Here.
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 Masky.
Here.
Bernstein.
Yeah.
Mr. Sessa.
Here.
Test.
I am here.
Excellent.
Got approved.
How's that? Okay. First up, we have a few meeting minutes for consideration. First up is the meeting minutes of March 4, 2021.
Eligible members, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Scoboe, Mr. Peace, and Mr. Hashtag, Mr. Chikarelli, Mr. Delcor, the Mayor, the Vice Chair, and yourself.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
So we'll make a motion, Scoboe.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments from the days? Hearing that roll call, please.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Chikarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Mayman Delcor?
Yes.
Merrill Pani?
Yes.
Mike Scherduyan?
Yes.
Chair Serrati?
Yes. Next up, meeting minutes of October 28, 2021. I think everyone is eligible except Ms. Smith.
Same group that was eligible for March, and add Mr. Wagner.
Perfect. May I have a motion to approve? So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Chikarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Mayman Delcor?
Yes.
Merrill Pani?
Yes.
Mike Scherduyan?
Yes.
Chair Serrati?
Yes. And the final minutes are from April 14, 2022.
Different group, Mr. Peace and Mr. Hashtag, Ms. Smith, Committee Man Delcor, Merrill Pani, and the Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just a question. I had reviewed and submitted my review of the April 14 minutes to the DeBora Pageant. I don't know, does that still exclude me, Counselor, from the minutes?
Did you sign the document indicating you reviewed the tape as well?
Yes, I have a copy of it here. The original was handed.
Then you may vote.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wagner?
Okay.
I'll move to approve him.
There a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any comments? Hearing that roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Delcor?
Yes.
Merrill Pani?
Yes.
Chair Serrati?
Yes. Next up, we have a resolution for consideration. It's JSM at Hillsborough LLC. The file number is 20-PB-09-MSPV.
Eligible members, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Peace, and Mr. Chikarelli, the Mayor, and yourself.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve? So. There a second?
Second.
Thank you. Comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Chikarelli?
Yes.
Merrill Pani?
Yes.
Chair Serrati?
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, we do not have any planning board business, nor.
Chair, I just wanted to take a minute, just talk about the Chromebooks for a second. I mean Fred explained a lot to me before I got here, so I'm a lot less cranky about it than I was like before I got here.
I was gonna suggest to switch to decaf, you know?
No, but because for me, my paper trail starts at the Environmental Commission
with environmental impact statement, stormwater reports, a slew of documents. You know, when I got on here this morning, I saw 1,100 pages of stuff.
But I was talking to Mr. Masky, and he was saying that'll continue in terms of the Environmental Commission, because for me, I would have, there's no Chromebooks at the Environmental Commission. I have to use my own computer, you know, streaming on some whatever. You know, I usually pen and ink a lot of stuff and take notes. Dr. Ruff is talking about the stormwater, this, that, the other thing. So, you know, once they went through it, it was a lot better scenario. But I don't know if when the administrators were kind of coming up with this plan, if they considered, you know, a lot of those moving parts. So, you know, I think it'll work at this point, but eventually, I don't know if they're gonna branch out to other committees, but there are those, you know, issues that if they consider that, they should be considered for the users. I understand with administrators, they want to save money, time, but it doesn't always work that well for users in all situations. So, that being said, I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, thank you. There David took notes? Excellent. Okay. So, moving, no planning board business, no consideration of ordinances. And next is business from the floor. If there's anyone that would like to address the board on any topics other than those that are in this evening's agenda, you may step forward. I see no takers, and I'm gonna move on to public hearings for applications tonight. To my understanding, our first one, Homestead LLC with file number of 21-PB-25-MS/MSPV. The application's being rescheduled to next week?
That's correct. It's been rescheduled to May 12.
Okay, is there any formal action we need to take?
No, we, the reason we put it on here, we had posted it in the tentative agendas, but before notice went out, there was some shuffling of the agendas. So, there will be notice sent out, but we felt it would be advisable to just put it on here. So, if anybody did show up tonight, they'd know it's not tonight. It's rescheduled for May 12.
Okay. And moving on to next is Hillsborough 206 Holdings LLC, file number 18-PB-07-MSPV. What do we have going on with this? Counselor, you wanna go listen?
This is, the board may recall, this is an application that was before the board back in 2019. That is one of the township's affordable housing projects. There has been issues relative to the retail portion of it. Mr. Hoff and his client were back here in 2020, and then again in 2021, getting extinction on that, on that piece only. And he is back again for another picture, so what he's looking for now, so that is why he is here.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein. Mr. Chairman, for the record, Richard Hoff, the law firm, Mr. Gerhoff, here on behalf of the applicant. So, Mr. Bernstein indicated this is a site that is a part of the township's affordable housing plan. It's a little different. It's a site that includes both residential and non-residential, 175 units, as well as 12,500 square feet of retail space. The resolution contains a condition that provides that within at 50% of the COs for the residential units, the retail shall be under construction. And if not, we need to return to the board within a year. So, while not explicitly, it's because it contains that update provision, we work from the presumption that, well, the update might be good enough, but there's also the interpretation that that means that when we get to 50% of the COs for the residential, that retail has to be under construction. And we didn't want to take any risks, so we've been proceeding with the understanding that when we get to that point, that retail should be under construction. Now, we're ready to go. We submitted a letter on March 25. The reason we're here today is really twofold. We provided, we've submitted an application asking for that condition to be removed for the resolution, and I'll, I'll get to that. But alternatively, we're here with our annual update as to where we are on the retail. And where we are in the retail is where we were in 2020, 2021, and here today. We don't have any retail. We have the boxes on the plan, and to allow us to continue with the residential unimpeded, we're prepared to build those boxes. Clients committed to it, they've got construction drawings ready to submit. But I can tell you, we, you may recall back in the last time I was here, there was discussion about, hey, why don't you maybe approach council, because one of the issues we were hearing was a drive-through might be warranted for some uses. Whereas in the ordinance, that's prohibited. We went and I had a meeting myself with myself, Mr. Masky, Mr. Barrera, to go over, you know, what do we want out there? We personally would like a sort of a build-to-suit situation. In other words, we don't want to just build the boxes and have whoever show up. You know, you know, you can imagine the uses you'll get when you have just a building. You'll get the pedestrian, you know, the pizzerias, nail sponges, because the building's there. It's a box, and someone will take it. We will do that in accordance with the plan. The architectures will submit it. They're attractive buildings, but there's no user attached to them. And what we would prefer to do is, we would prefer to wait till the retail is ready. And by that, I mean, wait till someone comes to us with a use that might be more attractive than would otherwise be presented by simply a, someone that comes along and sees a building space and says, yeah, I'm looking for a spot. I'll take 3,000 square feet of that, or I'll take 5,000. So, we're here today to ask that that condition be removed to provide us that flexibility to let the retail come to us, as opposed to simply creating a retail space that wouldn't necessarily attract the most dynamic users. And that's really our pitch with respect to that. We're, it's not an issue of wanting to change what's out there. We want to do the retail. It's in our incentive economically to do the retail. We own the site. We'd love to have retail tenants out front, but we'd like to have better retail tenants, build-to-suit retail tenants. That my client would much prefer to come to this board potentially with a revision of the site plan, because a really good use wants to tweak it a little bit. We'd welcome that. We don't have it yet. We've got brokers. We've got not one letter of intent on the property yet. We think that will come. The rooftops are coming. We think it becomes a more attractive site as the retail becomes more beyond just the bricks and the foundations. When people start occupying that space, we think that provides a better opportunity for the retail to be attractive. But we don't know that. COVID's been strange, especially on the retail front. So, we continue to hold it out as available. We continue to take calls. We continue to take inquiries, but we're just not there yet. And for that reason, we'd rather not be tied to just the condition to build it for the sake of building it. So, that's really the pitch. I do have a representative here, but, you know, I've actually been more point contact on this, Mr. Masky, Mr. Bernstein. So, I'm, whatever I'm saying, I'm sure Mr. Teicher will come up and just tell you the same thing, because I got all the information from mine anyway. So, that's the pitch. You know, as I said, I'm here to answer questions. Mr. Teicher's here to answer questions, but we're respectfully requesting that that condition C of the original resolution be rescinded. No change to the plans. Retail's still there. Still required. It's not being replaced with anything. Just don't want the timing associated with it.
How much, or how soon were you able to be putting people in the buildings?
We estimate that the first COs in the buildings will come probably this fall.
And how many units will be ready?
That would. 12 to 18.
What's the total build-out, Mr. Masky?
175 total.
175. 15 building?
No, there's only 14 buildings. 12 to 15. By that, the earliest will be 12 to 15. One, one or two building?
Why don't you have?
A house and one or two buildings.
You're informed. I guess my concern is, all that I can speak is, there's a need for apartments, right? And affordable housing is part of that. And these units that are being built, there's affordable housing components in it, right?
Yeah.
And are these buildings exclusive? Each building is built the same number of apartments in it and same number of affordable, or is it mixed?
No, that I know varies. We in fact submitted the phasing earlier this week, and every building actually has some affordable units in. So, to your point, Mr. Mayor, we're stopped at 50%, the affordable stopped.
Sorry, just can you, can you give us a, if you said it, I apologize. The timing of sort of the outer date of when you think you'd be able to, to, to deal with the retail side?
The, the outer date?
Yes.
I don't know. I didn't, I didn't say that, because I don't know the answer to that question.
So, essentially, is it, are you asking for?
Let me ask you, when you say outer date, if we put in buildings tomorrow and build these? Or if we do what we are requesting, which is to wait for it to come to us?
Yeah, so I'm wondering, how, how long do we have to wait for it to come to you? That's my question. That, that's my question, right? I mean, are you asking for an open-ended wait period?
Yeah. Be candid, because I don't, we don't know the answer to that.
Kind of open-ended.
Yeah.
What then happens is, there's no real interest, not enough to warrant building, all, all the buildings that you intend to at this point.
Then we would have to come back to, well, expense. They're approved. The buildings are approved.
Correct.
So, yeah.
What happens if you have no tenants?
Then you have empty buildings. If.
So, you could still build the building.
Oh, we, we don't want the residential to slow down. So, our, our commitment is that we will build these buildings to comply with the condition.
But you'd rather wait and have it someone that was built to suit?
Correct.
But again, what guarantees that? What would you do with the property? I guess that that never occurs.
There's nothing else that can be done. These buildings are what's on the approved plans. We have to come back to this.
And you'd have to build the, the boxes.
Yeah, we have to build the boxes if the condition weren't lifted. And let's say the condition weren't lifted, and there's no market, nothing goes there. There's no other, any change to that? No, yeah, any change, we'd have to either get a zone change, because they're required by the zoning. And if the footprints of the building change, let's say we had one retail tenant that wanted to come in and combine the space into a single building. We'd have to come back to this board for approval.
I mean, I would recommend, you know, a year, and then come back in a year. You know, just my thought, but something, you don't want more empty stores. But you gotta like have some type of limit, I would think. Just a thought.
I'm just, I don't recall on the approval. Is there a build-out period for this project?
Well, when would you expect the, how, how long would you expect to build up?
Build out the residential? All buildings are in some form of construction at this point, so all of a year?
Except the one that's for retail. I mean, other than I saw, it looks like a foundation might have done that.
Okay. So, it's your testimony to say that if we're to give you approval to, to finish all the re, all the apartment buildings, you could have them all built within this, in the calendar year from now?
Yeah.
And, you know, barring unforeseen circumstances.
Correct.
And could I ask, wasn't the, weren't the buildings with the stores, like, wasn't there something in the agreement that they wouldn't be the last phase? It would be like, like halfway through or something like that?
Yeah, that's, that's the condition we're talking about here. We, we would have to get those under some form of construction, and 50% of the COs on the residential. And that's what we're seeking the relief on here tonight.
So that they could be moved to the end, and then all the residential be built first?
That's correct.
And then if the other, you know, if nobody comes to you, you would then have to come back to us or sooner, you know, and.
If, if the board were amenable to a condition that requires us to come back to update the board on the status of our progress on the retail side, that, that's fine. We, we could continue to update the board and come back and let you know where we stand. The, the difficulty for us is to have it halt the residential portion of the job. We're not gonna have that happen. So, we're going to put these boxes up so that we can continue to build out the residential.
All right, so I just have a practical question. Like, it would seem like with a lot of residential, there's gonna be use for the stores eventually, I would think. You know, like most places. So, is it common to have something like this, like other, other, other recent local examples? Like, is it common to wait and build to suit?
I'm, this is, this particular arrangement is somewhat uncommon. I've never had an approval that was tied specifically to delivering non-residential at a.
No, but is it common that businesses won't just use a, a box building, and they have to have something to suit? Like, is that a demand?
My clients that I tend to represent on the retail side usually do it tenant-specific, because they don't like empty buildings. They don't want to build a building and run the risk that it's not half. So, when I usually go in on an application, I've got lease attached to it. You know, I, I know what I'm building, because I've got someone that's taken the building permit, like ground lease for, you know, 20 years. You know, that, my, and again, this is just in my experience representing clients. Spec is not something they like to take risk on.
I was gonna say, I think the rest, you know, building just for the sake of building to comply, it's not gonna be financially feasible, or it's not as financially.
It's not as desirable.
Right. Exactly. So, I, I understand.
Are you having any issues because of the traffic, you know, configuration, meaning like if you're going southbound, it's, you can't get into your place?
We hear from the broker anything about this?
Before you start, I gotta swear to you, okay? You swear to this morning, you can hide the truth, the whole truth, and not put the truth. Yes, you're right. You say it by name, because you sound like.
Sure. Jack Teicher, T-Y-C-A-G-R. And Mr. Teicher, you're a representative of the app.
Correct. So far to date, the major issues in the market is not very strong, and there's just too many vacant retail locations, frankly, rental locations. Further and further north, and some exits, we'll be some late, just rental locations available. Attracting as far as spaces to be new, so it would be more attractive to somebody who could build exactly what they want. If we build it, will we get leases? Probably, we just don't know.
Yeah, I guess if you're going north and trying to get on a bypass, maybe you want to stop. I mean, there's pluses and minuses. I was just wondering.
It's just, it's just the vacancy in the market.
So, with the build-to-suit, just trying to, is one of the thoughts would be to change the footprint? Because we were talking about the whole site, so.
If one comes, they'll.
Maybe use a microphone. Sorry. You, you can use a hand help.
When, when a tenant comes, whether they want half the square footage, or it should become two buildings, or they want just one big building, that'll, that'll determine what we come back to the board with, with regards to relies, specifically for the retail.
And Mr. Chairman, one other point that I had discussed in the meeting was that we're, we're not even limiting it to the uses that are contemplated by the ordinance. If we get a user that might be a use that's not in the ordinance, we're gonna bring that to council to take a look at and say, hey, does that make sense here? And maybe get a zone change. So, it'll allow, again, user-driven. Obviously, the building's here. We would have to be permitted use, and it'd have to be as contemplated now. But we're, from our perspective, open to anything that someone wants to come and do, and if it works, it works. Well, you know, obviously, council needs to weigh in on that, but we're, we're open to any.
Because I know, I know the whole concept, the retail was to have it up to 206, you know, right up on there. And if someone wants something to build a suit, and it could be a drive-through, it's gonna wind up bringing it into the interior. Not sure that's consistent with the overlay and design.
We can fit a drive-through within the parking lot. This, with any footprint of the parking lot and buildings as contemplated on the site plan, we can fit a drive-through. You know, nowadays, more and more higher-end, rascally restaurants want drive-throughs to be on the table, faster than that. So, it's, it's become required in a lot of units, frankly, now.
I'm just saying, right up i- in the existing footprint of the building.
Yeah, we can fit a drive-through there. It wouldn't change the general location order of buildings.
Just like to point out, Mr. Chairman, the condition related to the drive-through was that it could only be for a bank. The initial idea, when, when they were building branch banks at the time, they needed a drive-through. They're prohibited from providing a drive-through for any other use. So, if they want to put a drive-through restaurant, just, just say, that would be a change. So, the drive-through was only to accommodate a bank and nothing else.
And we're, we're speaking of banks. We've got no LOIs, but we're, we're checking banks, which are an obvious tenant to reach out to. And the other, the other tenant that's, there's tenants looking are in the healthcare world, but we haven't received any LOIs yet.
And it does fit. The original site plan did show the, the drive-through. The concern, I think, and one of the reasons we limited it to banks is, do you want to drive? And then that's the thing that's what happened. If you get a drive-through McDonald's on the site, you're adding a certain amount of traffic and queuing to what is a residential neighborhood. So, that was the concern, you know? A drive-through bank, you don't get long lines. It's sort of intermittent. A drive-through restaurant, all of a sudden, you're bringing traffic up into this residential neighborhood.
So, how many of the units can be built without the, the, the box locations?
We're entitled to 50% of the COs for the, so that, call that 175, my math's terrible, 88, 82.
But if you didn't build the retail on the, because isn't there, there's residential above the retail's, well, right now?
No, no, except for. If, if by chance, the board township committee said, okay, we're gonna take that condition out. You build all the units. You've still got an empty piece of property there. In your wildest dreams, what would you like to put on that piece? You'd still want to do retail?
Down once.
No, I'm just wondering in your mind, you know, that, right? I mean, I don't think anybody's disagreeing to the fact that retail is not what it used to be. We're trying to fill up the town center buildings with retail. This is somewhat of an odd location, quite honestly, because as we just mentioned, you have to make the left. My question, I guess, is, is would you come back and say we wanted to build another residential building? Or, on the other end of the scale, would you just make a green space and make it a park for the people that live there?
There's economic value to retail. There's economic value to the retail, so it doesn't mean that we're gonna leave it a gravel pit. We, we obviously want the property to look great. So, to the extent that the condition is waived, I, I don't think we'll have any issue finishing the driveways and doing some great landscaping and make sure it looks good. I don't think we want to give up on the hopefully long-term economic viability of retail.
Yeah, I think you just hit on a good point. Whatever the board decides, the interim use of that property, so it doesn't look like an unfinished construction site. So, if all the residential's done, you would, you would want to come back with some sort of at least temporary landscaping plan, so, so it looks good.
Correct.
Okay.
So, if we're to, say, we give you permission to proceed to pick a number 65, 75%, and then come back and see us again? Something to that effect, to keep the project moving, or are you looking for a, and then you're looking for an indefinite, like?
We'd build it. We'd build the boxes. If you had, we just don't want to stop the residential.
So, I guess that's kind of what our choice. That's your ask, then, is to. It's either we grant you the relief for that, or you just build the boxes, finish the residential, and they say vacant for however long. So, that's kind of our choice, is what you're telling us.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. It is. That's the way I look at it.
Yeah, that's really, that's where we are. You have this option. I, like I said, we, we could come back.
The other option is if you were told that you had 50% build out, and you had to get the, the rest, you know, the, the retail, that's what was agreed to, right?
No, we'll do it. We'll build the buildings, but they won't have tenants.
But what I'm saying, you build them, they're vacant, or we grant you the relief for three, four, five, 20 years?
That's. There's third option.
Well, I'm just, I'm just stating the obvious, that's all.
The only third option I could see is that we have a condition, and we come back, and we get to update this board as to where we stand on the retail.
Or you're really just looking for a little extra time for someone to find you, right? So, maybe, like, you want to finish the residential, then maybe there's an agreement. Like, if that is a year from now, like, when do you plan to finish all the residential, if we finish 100%? And if that, what's the end date? Like, when would you finish that, do you know?
Next, give or take, give or take one year from now. Give or take.
How long would it take to build those retail buildings that?
To get to a one-bill show without the finishes?
Right, right.
Yeah, probably six months.
Like, start to.
Not less.
Start up to that point, six months to build?
I think one building permanent and, but I would assume less than six months, because all the site works done, the, the pavement will be done. I think one building permanent and, but I would assume less than six months, because all the site work's done, the, the tape will be done soon. And it's just.
So I guess one option is to, upon completion of the residential unit, you have six months to build the retail, whether you have a tenant or not.
Or come, or, or come back, you know, towards what Mr. Maskey was suggesting, whether or not it turns into some type of a parkland or some, so.
It's certainly more beneficial for us because, you know, it buys us time.
Yeah, but you've had three years, two years. So I, I mean, I understand your situation that you're in. But the way that I'm looking at it is, is you entered into an agreement. So now we're basically being told, you either grant me this extension or I build the boxes and they stay vacant, I build my 100% and off I go.
Fairness, if we build the boxes, we hope they don't stay vacant.
No, of course not, but that's, but I mean, you know, go down a mile down into Montgomery and everybody's got a vacancy. Go a mile the other way, everything's vacant, so I don't, I know what you're saying. I'm not saying don't build, I'm just, I'm not happy with the agreement that you entered into, because now there we are, two years down the road, got a, you know, it, it didn't happen, so I, I just.
Listen, I don't, I'm not putting it here as some, you know, it, we would rather have a tenant and build the buildings. So we're not doing this, because obviously it's not, it's to our benefit to have a, an A tenant in these retail spaces. There's no question about that. But we think we lose that A opportunity by just building on spec. That's the only reason we're presenting it this way, because we think that the probability of a vacant building.
What's the probability of somebody building something on spec? 18 months, 24 months? No idea. So, yeah, so we're kind of back to the same, you know, I understand what you're saying and I know somebody might find it more attractive to build something specifically that they want, but you still have to find a tenant.
If the board wants us to build the space at the risk of staying vacant for a long time, we're happy to do it.
So, I mean, what would the cost to build those three buildings be? Ballpark?
Interesting time to ask what the construction costs are, but generally speaking, I, I think it's somewhere in the $2 million range.
So if we were to say, ask to put, uh, we'd give you that, if we put in, take a million of that, put in escrow. So we'll give you the grant, then that, you know, half that construction cost, we get to keep in escrow and you should never, ever build down the road.
I, I mean, if, if the question is do that, if we're gonna put, if we're gonna.
It's just me incentive to come.
If we're gonna commit the capital, we'd probably rather build. If one of the buildings maybe, I don't, I don't know. I mean, yes, I don't, I don't, it's a question. We're committing the capital through the way, so I had talked to my partners about it, but I understand the question.
Yeah, it's, it's, well, we're not asking you to build the box to build the box, but we're asking some of the creative services that you, that you built.
Well, yeah, I understand.
And I think, you know, one of the things we can put in there is say, within six months of the final CO, they have to build beginning construction on those buildings. You know, versus, because I know, I know, you know, I think there's some concern up here, you know, how long do, you know, does that site stay unconstructed for years? I think we put a timeline, that's, because that's why I had asked a question about how long would it take for them to build those? And if it's six months, then it's six months from the last CO. Because I understand trying to build the spec, there may be someone coming in with a very creative, you know, business plan or something along those lines, that might be unique.
I, I think the issue is we, we don't want to hold up the housing, right? Because there's, there's a, you know, as we've heard many times over the last couple of months, there's, there, there's a very acute need. The issue is, you know, but, but I'll be honest with you, I'm not, I'm, I'm uncomfortable kind of making it open-ended. I think there has to be some window that says, you know, whether it's six months or, you know, i- i- if it's, if you expect you're going to be done a year from now, you know, but sometime between six months and a year after that, I think is, you know, i- is when we would expect you to start, whether you've got, um, whether you've got the tenant or not, you know, at that point, there, there comes a point where, um, I, I think it has to be, you have to be committed to, to building it.
To decouple the residential, but still have an outside date by which we have to, that's, that's fine, that's fine. We, we don't, we don't want to commit, if you don't want vacant retail and now it's preppers, buying to build a suit, by all part involved, now we're all suggesting the option. We're, we're, we're fine to build it. I, I also understand the idea of, of the security for eventual, to securitize a possible build of suit. And that's an interesting idea, let me talk to my partners about that. Um, that's an interesting idea. But either way, we're looking to not slow down the residential. So if, if, if it's less than a year from now, we'd have to start, we're just probably going to start now, if that was the obligation.
What, what is your, um, forecast for tenants, residential tenants?
Uh, default.
Available to them, but do you have a backlog? Are you, can you forecast, are, are you sold out?
We have, we don't start leasing, we deliver the demand first.
So when you're pitching it, are you pitching that there's going to be commercial?
It's not a strong part of pitch.
It's not part? Okay. But I can't imagine they'll be happy, having, I, I would think that the original concept was by the time you're done building, you're also done building the box, the boxes, so that when you have residents move in, there's, they're not, there's not construction going on at their interest to their residents.
The, the disruptive part of construction using that is just really more the site work and that'll be done. So when, when you're really just down to directing the steel, steel building, it's really not very disruptive.
Okay, just wanted to see what that relationship was between the two.
Now, we, 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 you're almost done with the site work now, we plan, if, if, if we don't start the research now, we do plan on temporarily landscaping it, finishing it, making sure it looks good.
No pad though, right? Just, it's just the.
We're not on foundations, no, but pad's ready and ready for foundations, whenever we're ready, that's already ready.
Alright.
Eric, what's options?
You can choose not to waive the 50%. You can choose to waive it with some conditions upon it. You can choose to waive it with an open-ended situation. I think, I don't think it's in the board's interest, I don't think was ever in our feeling when we, when we.
Okay, I'm sorry.
When we entered into this situation, and this was actually the first project that we dealt with, with the affordable housing, with somebody else representing the client of Mr. Hoff. And we wanted the retail. Um, obviously situations have somewhat changed. I think one option that's available to the board is to push the date out in terms of the percentage required to be built before. With the caveat that instead of it has to be built, uh, Mr. Hoff needs to come back in advance of that timeframe with a plan. Either it's going to not happen and there's a plan for what's going to happen if it doesn't. Or guess what? We found the live one and we're looking to build and this is what we're going to do. I think the ultimate desire of the board and the township is not to have a residential complex with a building or buildings sitting there that are empty. Just foundations and or an outer shell, I can just see the visits we're going to get here. You know, if I had all, I got promised or I only knew or if I would, I don't think that's the objective here. And it's a conversation, I don't think I'm telling a story out of school, that Mr. Hoff and myself and Mr. Farah have had. So unless the board is hell-bent on, we want a building built with or without a tenant, I think it may be in the board's best interest to sort of give a little more leeway to the applicant, but not an unfettered right to sort of go out there and then we'll let you know down the road after we've built all the residential.
That, that's kind of what I was, was saying before, I think there has to be some window on the backend that says, and perhaps the, um, you know, the, the trigger point, at least for a, a, a status update, is maybe before your first CO on the last building? So that's somewhere, you know, give or take a little, less than a year from now. I, I'm assuming you're, the buildings will be done sequentially, so there'll, there'll be a last building that'll be built. Before that, before we issue any COs on that last building, we want an update on where the, that, that gets you, you know, whatever. You know, 90%, 95% of the way done.
Just, just for the board's edification, the, the schedule that was given to me, Mr. Hoff referenced earlier, the last building in, in their current order of completion would be building number six, which has 14 market units and two affordable units.
So that's 16 units out of the 170 something, right?
75, right.
A little, a little under temperature.
3.5%.
Yeah, right, prior to that, right, because the, I'm sure the board doesn't have this in front of them, but with the completion of building 14, which is next to last, they will be 89% complete on the market units and 95% complete on the low and mod units. That last building six would bring it up to 100%, obviously, an additional 14 markets and an additional two low and mods. So all but two of the affordables would have been built by that time, which is, which is, okay.
So they could still build it, they just won't get the official CO or approval, but they can construct it, then they got to come in, right?
The plan, yeah. And you could probably also, the way these buildings are built, you could probably also TCO just two affordable units. So those are finished, and it's just the marketing, I think we're going to be still, I guess is.
That's fair.
Um, you have to check with our building department. My understanding from other projects is they, they CO the whole building, they don't CEO individual units. So what I'm hearing is.
So the, the, the building then, okay.
Sorry, what?
You good with that, man?
No, I, I was gonna say, so just for clarification, if within that year's time, if you get somebody that says build suit is the resolution right now for the boxes and you'd have to come back and say, we got to change the boxes to whatever we change it to?
Yes.
Is that how it works? Okay. That's, if it's outside the perimeter of what you.
Correct. If it's outside. We got a good user that wants this particular, if we get that bang.
Then you're going to come back and say, we want to adjust the boxes to this.
If we need to.
If you need to. Yeah.
We get that bang, then build bang.
Right, yeah. And that wouldn't, regardless of what the board decides tonight, that wouldn't change. So even if they weren't asking for this waiver, if they changed anything that was approved on the site plan, they'd have to come back no matter what. So that, that's not affected by, by this decision. I just want to clarify that.
So am I hearing that upon the completion of the next to the last building, which would be the 13th building, that they would have to be turned to the board and give a status, uh, in terms of where the retail stands at that point? Perhaps it will have been completed and, and occupied by that point if we're all lucky. But is that what I'm hearing, that upon the completion and to, and final CO on building number 13 of the 14, they would return to the board to give you an update, then you can decide at that point what to do at that point?
Yeah, I think at that point, we, you know, we decide that what's due or set an end date for.
For some other option?
When the retail has to be built.
Or some alternative for that piece of ground.
Yes, alternative space use.
Yes.
No later than.
What's that?
No later than the completion of the 14th building. I don't want to end up where they've completed it and now they're starting to build on it.
I would say maybe when they get the permit to start to build the 13th building.
I think we have all the permits.
Okay, so when, when you start to build it?
I think we've already started.
You're building them all, getting meticulous?
The condition was related to CO.
Okay. So you're building them anyway, gotcha.
Yeah, so.
We just, before the COs.
We're not going to give this to CO until we have.
So again, when the, when the CO is, or, as Ms. Bernstein is saying, we don't want to wait till the, you don't have to wait till the actual CO is. So when you got, when you're getting ready to be CO for that last, next to last building, you need to return to the.
You know, I just want to.
It's as much for your client, Rick, as it is for the board, get them, get you on the agenda, enough time. You know, we may be pleasantly surprised and find that this summer you find a tenant, and this is all been a wonderfully esoteric conversation that leads, but.
Let, let's just be, be clear about the, which building and how we order, because when you said 13, built the 13th building, there's 14 buildings, but it's actually building six, right? Well, didn't you say it was building six was?
Yeah, they, they numbered their buildings and.
So let's just, just phrase it the right way.
They're not, they're not, yeah, they're not in numerical order, one, two, three, four, five, six, they jump around.
It would be the 13th of 14 buildings, regardless of what its number.
Exactly.
It's 13th of the 14 residential buildings, the 13th residential building.
Yeah.
For the, just to be clear, the phasing plan of.
May 4th, 2022.
Thank you.
Okay, make a motion to that. That was just stated.
Alright, so we got a motion and second and additional, final comments, thoughts?
Probably.
No, that's right. So motion open to public?
Is there a second?
Second, second.
One favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Okay.
Yep.
There you go.
Yeah, just write there, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you.
Good evening.
You just got to get close to it, yeah?
It doesn't have a long range.
What's that?
Big burn noise.
Yeah? Okay. My name's Nia T. Shaw. I live on Deer Run, and this is my first time attending one of these meetings, so it's all new. Um, just hearing the conversation here, I just wanted to offer some thoughts based on what I've seen other places that might be really great for this ambiguous retail space that everybody's considering. Um, and what I've heard was that build to suit definitely makes sense, because there's so much empty retail north and south of this property, right? It's just sitting there and everybody's wondering what's going to happen, like that CVS shopping center in Montgomery, half that lot's not even paved and you're just running through rubble as you try to get to the CVS. I mean, it's an eyesore. Um, and the other thing I heard Mr. Maskey say was, what if we put a park? And I want to amend that to say, what if it's a hybrid space? Where I've seen this in, uh, in other places, where it's a park with an adjoining, like small, like yogurt shop or coffee stand, or like a bakery, right, where the parents can get their coffee and the kids can play and you don't have to bring your own stuff, right? Um, we don't have that in any of the surrounding areas. And as a parent, I know that if I'm running out the house with my son, I'm not grabbing everything and sometimes I like to not grab everything. The other thing I'd like to point out is directly across from that property is the Iron Peak Center, right? And they do have a concession stand that has a lot of stuff. But when you leave that, if you know there's a park down the street where you could go and maybe get a frozen yogurt or an ice cream and your kids can play, that might be another hour you'd spend there, right? Um, and the final idea is, I think the last two years have shown us that, um, you appreciate your outdoor spaces, right? You need to get out, you can't just be stuck in. And people had to find ways to stay fit on their own. And what if we were able to get a fitness studio that had an outdoor pavilion that in the good weather, you could exercise outdoors, you'd see everybody out there and you want to join, you want to attend. It would be a, like a premium kind of gym membership, right, where you have a beautiful rain space and you have a fitness place. And maybe you grab, get a smoothie, you know?
Did you just come back from Lakewood Ranch?
I did not. You know where I saw this, where I saw part of this was when we had gone to Lisbon before the pandemic. And every park in Lisbon, right, it's all urban. Every park in Lisbon, Lisbon had a playground and this little red kiosk. And they served you, it's like all kinds of caffeinated beverages, right? And they washed the cups onsite too, which I was like, this is very eco-friendly. But the kids have their space and they put these little tables out and the parents could watch the kids and they could get whatever they wanted. And you're not like, you know, you're not just standing there waiting for your kid to finish playing so that you can get out. You're, you know, you're having a good time too. And I thought, why can't we have that here? I haven't seen that anywhere. And that would separate it and differentiate it from the. And that would separate it and differentiate it from the empty retail on either end. This would be premium, this would be really nice. Just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Rest of public?
Susan Golliford Huglebruck. It sounds like the board is tending toward not no deadline, but either an extension of time or an increase in the C O's. So if you did one of those two and they had, they came back, what would they present to the board or propose to present or be required to present to show that they did try, I mean, advertising, are they gonna show they had some response from A, B, and C, but they couldn't suit it? Or what are they gonna show the board to show that we gave it, we gave it the college try and it's not working?
We aren't financially incentivized to have these buildings occupied. We don't.
It's total enclosure.
Like for bumper drive. We have more incentive than anyone to have these buildings built. So we intend and we have brokers and we actively market these things. There's no incentive for us not to, we just, we're giving up revenue to not have these buildings up and occupied.
Okay, I'm just a little leery because of, I can't remember, the one that's up at Valley Road, that he kept saying, I can't get the retail and he got more tenants and not more. And he's down to the point where I think he's supposed to have a hotel, that's it. And all the rest, he just kept coming back and coming back and increasing his residential, so.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think the issue is for them to kind of validate that they gave it the old college try. I think the issue is for them to come back and tell us where they are. And then that then obligates the board to figure out what the deadline is that we want to, what, either they're gonna be able to do it, uh, built to suit, or we're gonna have to have it built regardless, uh, at some point down the road. And, and depending upon how they've, uh, how they've progressed is gonna ultimately determine what that, what that window's gonna be beyond the last building.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any final comments from the board?
Motion to close public.
So we gotta close it? Okay, motion to close.
So moved second.
One favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we have a motion out here, our proposal, the mayor's presented, like allowing to waive the fifty percent. I'll call it the fifty percent rule to the thirteenth out of fourteen buildings, which is about ninety percent. And that they will be obligated to come back if they don't have a tenant at that point or, you know, lined up and ready to build, so.
And just, Mr. Chairman, just with the understanding, I guess it's obvious, but if the retail is built by that point, they don't have to return.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
But probably the reason would be that they have, they, they have to build the retail. Why, why the ninety percent?
No.
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 No, we're gonna give them up to that before they, they'd have to hold residential building, which is essentially, or they're not gonna get C O for, for the last building.
Basically holding the last building hostage.
Right, no, no, I get that. I just want, I want to.
We're, we're, we're holding it in escrow, right?
Escrow.
Holding it in escrow.
The issue will be for that last building, they have to come back to plan of how we're gonna build. And, you know, some, it's only, it's only gonna take them six months to build the retail. We know we've got, you know, at, at least that window to deal with.
Okay.
Which we hope we don't have to hear.
Right. Okay, so if there's no additional comments, I'm gonna ask for a roll call.
You have a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Don't ask me who.
Yeah.
Oh, you have to head first, certainly.
Clarification that when we, I guess the one, not suggesting the board would do this, but if we show up with our update, one of the fears would be that we don't get C O on the last building until the retail's completed and then it buildings sits for six months. Probably build the retail.
I think that's why you're coming back to the board at that point, for them to decide what to do at that point.
I, I, I think the issue would be frankly, if, if you came back at that point and said, we can't, we're not gonna build the retail for another three years, then we may say, well, then you, you don't get the last bill.
The, the clarification being, right now, the condition is we start construction on the retail as opposed to finish the retail. So we're supposed to start construction on the retail prior to.
No.
No.
We come back, my concern was we come back and the condition now, the condition now is it starts, not finishes. So if, if that could change, we'd rather just start construction.
May, may I?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know if, if what Mr. Hoff has raised is re, in reality, an issue. Because both sides have a lever, I'll, I'll use the phrase leverage point. The leverage point from the board is the retail, the leverage point from the applicant is the affordable housing, which is the last building as well. So I don't think the board is going to tell you, you can't build the last building unless the affordable housing. I think the issue becomes, where are we going to go from here?
I think I'm not, I'm not looking.
How open that window is on the backend to build a retail.
I'm not looking to put the board and the township in non-compliance over two affordable housing units relative to this, so.
Understood?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Skovak?
Yes.
Ethan?
Yes.
Head bag?
Yes.
Chipperelli?
Yes.
You have a Delphine?
Yes.
Eric Hani?
Yes.
Richard Julian?
Yes.
Chris Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you. Hopefully we don't see you again. No offense.
On this project.
On this project.
Okay. You okay, Mike? All right. Good. So next up is Forty, Forty-four Woods Ten LLC, file number twenty-one dash P B dash zero-two dash R E S. And I believe the applicant seeking relief from conditions of approval for minor subdivision approval granted by way of old resolution, oh-seven P B dash twenty-nine dash M R R back on March thirteenth, two thousand and eight, and associated waivers to include driveway, driveway improvements proposed on lot ten point oh-two and development of lot ten point oh-one on the property and the residential agricultural, agricultural zone. And this was rescheduled from April seventh of this year, so.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman Francis P. Linus, representing Forty-four Woods Ten LLC. I do not represent the adjoining owner who is part of the subdivision, but he's here tonight to testify on his own behalf. I'm very pleased to be here live. It's always good to see the faces of board members. I represent three planning boards, virtual meetings, and we have been for what seems to be forever.
You gotta get on those administrative.
And I'm also pleased that we're not in an affordable housing application. And I know you've had your affordable housing application. This is a rather simple request to obtain relief from four conditions of a two thousand and eight approval by the planning board, a minor subdivision on Woods Road. By way of brief overview, on March thirteenth, two thousand and eight, this board granted application for some minor subdivision approval for what was then known as block two oh five, lot ten eight. Uh, at that time, the property consisted of approximately six acres, had an existing single-family dwelling, which had a driveway onto Woods Road and a second driveway leading to the back of the property for entrance into the back of the house. Uh, the subdivision approval subdivided the property into two conforming lots. And, uh, we have the resolution and submitted the resolution as an exhibit to our proceedings. Uh, the minor subdivision was perfected by a deed, and I say perfected by a deed, which means the board signed off on the minor subdivision dated May twentieth, two thousand and eight, and it was signed by the chairman and the planning board secretary. And that deed was recorded in the Somerset County Clerk's Office in two thousand and eight. Well, lot ten point oh-two, which is the last fronting on Woods Road, is now owned by the Brzyskis, specifically Frank Brzyski, who's here on behalf of the owners. He occupies the present, the residence with his wife and, and family and has done so since apparently two thousand and eleven. You'll hear from him, cause I don't represent him, so he'll have to make his own statements. Uh, the rear lot, ten point oh-three, is owned by the applicant, and that's Forty-four Woods Ten LLC. And what they'd like to do is clear the conditions so that they can sell that lot and somebody could, uh, construct the single-family dwelling on this three-acre lot, uh, which has been in existence since two thousand and eight. Uh, the conditions, we're seeking approval for elimination. First one is condition number six, uh, and that has to do with shade trees. The original approval, and you'll hear that, the original approval, uh, required twelve shade trees to be planted by the developer. Uh, there are, you'll hear that there are no street trees on Woods Road, specifically in the immediate vicinity, and requirements to plant street trees is not consistent with neighborhood and surrounding area. That's what you'll hear from the witness. Uh, they're also seeking a modification of condition number eight. Uh, your current ordinance regulating affordable housing development fees provides that residential development fees be at one and a half percent. That's the current rule and that's the rule that, uh, provision that should be applied to this application. Back then, two thousand and eight, fourteen years ago, you had growth share ordinance, which required something different. It's no longer in existence, so there's a substantial change in the law and a change in circumstances. So we're looking for a modification of that condition. Uh, we're also looking for elimination of that condition number nine, uh, which is actually an exception for, uh, from your design and performance standards relating to sidewalks. You'll hear testimony, and I drove there tonight, drove from my house and they'll be through Woods Road to come to, to the meeting. Uh, there are no sidewalks in the immediate vicinity. And there's no rationale for requiring sidewalks since the ordinance states that sidewalks along all streets are not required. Since there's no ordinance creating the sidewalk fund in lieu of constructing a sidewalk, the contribution set forth in the two thousand and eight condition needs to be deleted. We're also looking for, finally, we're also looking for elimination of condition number ten uh, based on changed circumstances. At, at the time of the original subdivision approval, the applicant at that time, uh, proposed to change the doors on the house for lot ten point oh-two, now owned by Mr. Brzyski and his, his family, and make the garage on the existing, the then, on the currently existing and then existing home, a side entry garage. The applicant at that time was proposing to remove the existing northerly driveway and the portion of the existing southerly driveway east of the new side entry garage. The current owners of lot ten point oh-two, the Brzyskis, uh, prefer not to have these alterations made to their property. It's been in existence in that fashion since two thousand and eight, since they moved into the property and, and they see might be unreasonable to require them to make any of those changes. As a matter of fact, and you'll hear from Mr. Brzyski, we have public record, uh, at one point in time, probably in two thousand thirteen or fourteen, the septic system had to be relocated. So what did he do? He got a zoning permit and the zoning permit allowed him to move the second driveway to his current location. So apparently the Brzyskis did everything they could with respect to, everything legal, uh, with respect to what they could do with the driveway. And then finally, uh, even though the zoning permit resulted in an increase in impervious coverage over the requirements, the ordinance, the Brzyskis are here tonight and the application is for them to reduce impervious coverage, and we'll hear from Mike Ford, who's our first witness, uh, to reduce the impervious coverage, notwithstanding the issuance of the zoning permit uh, to less than ten percent, which is the required, maximum requirement in the, in the zoning question. Uh, so I have Mr. Mike Ford from Van Cleef Engineering. He's here to testify as to the, what the property looks like, uh, what the minor subdivision granted, what it looks like today, and also the impervious coverage reduction. Uh, I also have the Brzyskis here, they're speaking on behalf of themselves, I do not represent them. And I also have a representative of the applicant. If you, if the board, as the board public has any questions to the applicant, we have the courage. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mike Ford.
You're trying to, Mr. Murray, you think that's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, the rest of the truth? Yes, I do. The record, do you think it's not your name? Yes, Michael Ford, F O R D.
All right, Mike, you, you've, you've submitted a number of exhibits which are part of this application, including the minor subdivision plan approved by the board way back in two thousand and eight, as well as an impervious coverage reduction plan, as well as, uh, what, what exists today, have you not?
Yes.
Okay, you wanna take the board through that, please?
Yeah, just, um, been accepted as a professional engineer here before this board. You're nodding.
And no change, just say you're any.
No.
Like, you still have your license, Mike?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Um, okay. Um, all of the exhibits we're gonna use this evening are, um, on Civic Clerk. They were all documents that were submitted as part of the application. Um, how are your Chromebooks working? Can you, this, uh, plan that the, the first illustration we're using is the minor subdivision, um, from the original application, uh, dated last revised April twenty-third, two thousand and eight. Um, that illustrates, um, the original application, which was the entire tract of land split into two lots, one with the existing house fronting Woods Road, the newly created flag lot of three acres, uh, for the purposes of constructing a new, uh, single-family dwelling toward the rear of the property. Uh, you'll see on this illustration, uh, the first, uh, condition of, and there's those four conditions Mr. Linus outlined that we're seeking to have eliminated, uh, from the original resolution, um, so that that cleans up title for the existing residential vacant lot at to the rear so that it can be sold and, and the single-family house can be built on it. The two lots do exist today, uh, they're in different ownership, uh, and we're not seeking to change any lot lines. It's just those four specific conditions that present a problem for the clean transfer of title for the rear lot. The first condition, uh, Mr. Linus outlined is the street trees along Woods Road. You'll see on this minor subdivision that, um, it shows the proposed twelve shade trees. We're seeking to eliminate that, um, condition. And the existing, uh, conditions along Woods Road are that it's, uh, not, um, been developed as a, a typical, uh, tract housing, single-family, um, development, but it's more, uh, I'll say rural nature with, um, not a soldier row of trees along Woods Road, Woods Road. Uh, and the Brzyskis that own the front property, uh, don't wish to have the street trees in a soldier fashion across the front of their property, but they have actually, and, and this will be part of their presentation of, uh, installed evergreen trees, and I'm highlighting on the exhibit now, uh, basically along the front of the property, directly parallel and, uh, off the end of the existing single-family house. So that's one condition we're seeking to have eliminated, the requirement for the street trees. The second condition is with respect to the affordable housing fee. And as Mr. Linus described, the, the way that's calculated is different now. So it's, the old condition would be substituted with, uh, the future builder of the rear lot complying with the current township standard for the contribution regarding affordable housing and the way that's calculated. Uh, item, uh, the third condition, so that was the second. The third condition, uh, requesting relief for is condition number nine regarding the contribution in lieu of putting sidewalks along the frontage. The original minor subdivision didn't propose any sidewalk or any road widening along Woods Road, but it did have a condition that the applicant make a contribution to the sidewalk, uh, for sidewalks to the township. Um, as was outlined in, um, uh, as part of the application material, there's not a, uh, a requirement that, that, that that kind of contribution be made in the current ordinance. And there are no existing sidewalks along, uh, Woods Road in the vicinity of this property at all. In fact, uh, some of the houses that were part of country classics. In fact, some of the houses that were part of country classics that were constructed along Woods Road by the S-turn, you'll note that they don't have sidewalks in front of them. That's the third condition, seek, the applicant seeking relief. The final condition, and this relates directly to the existing single-family house and the driveways. The Briskys bought the property with the two driveways there, so the subdivision was perfected, the deeds were filed, and the owners of the property at that time, the, the developers, transferred title to the Briskys with the two driveways. And I'm going to go to another exhibit that's part of the file, and that's a zoning permit. This is on Civic Clerk, a zoning permit that was issued to Mr. Brisky in 2012. And I'm going to the exhibit that was attached to that zoning permit where the existing dri, one of the two existing driveways, this is the southerly driveway or the driveway that's on the right side of the property that leads to the rear of the house. The second driveway that still is in its existing condition, even, you know, remains as it was at the time of the 2008 subdivision is a second driveway directly in front of the house leading to an existing garage in the existing house. And that driveway, if you're familiar with the property, it actually kind of slopes down because the, the garage that still exists today in the dwelling is at a lower level. So the grade is actually lower than Woods Road there, it's, it's got some walls on either side of it. What this zoning permit illustrates that was issued in 2012, that's after the subdivision was perfected, is the township's granting permission for the Briskys to move the existing southerly driveway a little further south. And that was part and parcel to a remedy to an existing septic problem that was undertaken by the owners at that time. And this is the way it exists today, that is the relocated driveway to the south. And now I'm gonna go to a third exhibit, which is the existing survey. So you have the southerly driveway, and I can zoom in a little bit. If I find it here. I can zoom, oh, I'm flipping it too. So the existing southerly driveway you'll see in this location is relocated a little further away from the dwelling, if you will, and further to the south. And the existing driveway toward, that enters the existing garage at the front of the house remains there. And part of this recent survey that was done, and I'm gonna go right to the title block now and give you the date. Excuse me. In Jul, in July of 2007, updated in August of 2021. So it says of August of last year, shows those existing conditions. And this was actually, this document was produced after the application was submitted in discussions and requests for additional information by the township staff. And this shows the two existing driveways, but the survey also revealed a driveway apron on the most northerly side or left side of the property. What the Briskys would like to do is maintain the two existing driveways on the south, that is the center, the seventh, center driveway that leads to the existing garage, that serves the utility for access and parking, access to that garage and parking in the front of the property, and then maintain that existing southerly driveway that was relocated in 2012 by permit to access the rear of the property because the way the house is constructed, as I understand it.
Yeah, like one of those virtual reality. I was like, I was thinking all these permeations about two hours ago, and I was just like getting more upset, more upset, more upset. Because, I mean, you understand all the logistics with the documents. I'm like, but, you know, after. Really? I'm definitely the guy at the office, like, by the print or printing out these documents. I'd rather read the doc, you know, I, it's just, it's old school, but, you know, highlight things, I pen them, I make notebooks. Everybody loves, loves my notebooks, all the millennials. It's all organized and sequenced and they're like, wow, this is great. I'm like, yeah. But that's, we're, we're dying breath. You know, when I saw 1100 pages, I was like, kidding. Well, you should get the page, you know, I get those things, you know, pamphlets, read them, market up, habit, those environmental commission, make notes, bring it to your, you know, I mean, that thing travels with maybe like six months or something. I was like, can't do that on this, you know?
Okay, we're back in session.
Ford, go ahead, continue, please.
Okay, thank you. The exhibit I stopped on was the existing condition survey for Mr. Brisky's lot that was updated in August of 2021. What I've gone to next is another exhibit that's a matter of record and submitted as part of the application is that part of that survey identified that the existing conditions for the Briskys lot was over the 10% max impervious coverage allowed in the zone and was part of the original approval, or not authored by the original approval. So there was no exceedance of 10% granted as part of the original approval. So as part of this application, and again, this was with the help and, and discussions with the township staff, is that the, unless we were to request a variance for the existing impervious coverage exceedance on Mr. Brisky's lot, we would alternatively have to bring it down to under 10%. And that's what we're proposing to do. That is, uh, some of the existing impervious coverage on the Briskys lot, that is portion of the rear paves or, or stone area behind the house would be removed. And that northerly driveway, um, all the way to the left side of the property would be removed. And we show on this exhibit the reduction in impervious coverage, which is shaded, and the end result would be a proposed condition that's not over the 10% allowed by the zone. One of the staff reports that we received was that we show on this exhibit the impervious coverage being removed from the Briskys lot, and that would be the dr, the driveway on the northerly property line to the prop, you know, the driveway being removed to the property line. What was suggested in one of the staff reports was that we actually remove it all the way out to the edge of the travel lane on Woods Road, and we would do that, so the, there wouldn't be a driveway apron left there, it would be removed.
Okay, did you have an opportunity, Mike, to review the three staff reports that were issued? And let's take them. The first staff report was Drew's staff report, engineering review number one dated April 20th, 2022. Do you want to address any issues there?
Uh, yes, I think it's my, as I went through my testimony, I've touched on, I'll say, two items and suggestions in the board's engineer that the applicant would, um, is, is desirable not to comply with. That is, we remain requesting the elimination of the requirement of the 12 shade trees along the frontage of Mr. Brisky's lot. And then the Briskys themselves would prefer to keep the status quo with the two driveways as per that 2012 zoning permit. That is the, I'll call it the center driveway and the south driveway.
And did you have an opportunity to review Mr. Masky's March 17th, 2022 memorandum?
Yes.
Were there any issues raised by Mr. Masky that you care to address?
I, I don't, I think that my testimony addressed, um, the, the items in the report, and that would be it.
And, and finally, did you attend the environmental commission meeting, which discussed this particular application?
Yes.
And did I hand you the environmental commission report this evening?
Did you?
Yeah, I think I did.
I think you were handed it on the way in.
That's right, I seen it.
Mr. Chairman, we received the environmental commission memo today at 4:58, and there is a copy on each of the board members' seats.
Right, and, and in the courts with the environmental commission report, they have no objection to be relieved from conditions?
That's correct.
Mike, since I had a chance to read that letter, can I, I have just a couple of things. I don't know if you had a chance to read it, but I just got it before the meeting too, but, so. It says the following items were discussed, and that refers to the environmental commission meeting. Mr. Ford stated that the applicant is exempt from the Delaware and Raritan, the RCC approval. But I do see a DRCC approval letter with, you know, some wordage in here that subdivision was exempt from the commission because the project did not propose the creation of one acre. However, since then it's been repealed. So it seems contradictory to me.
No, we actually, you know, I'm gonna find the, hold on. Yeah, we have, and this is a matter of record, we have a February 3rd, 2021 report from the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission that ultimately determines that the jurisdictional determination that the applicant is, is exempt from their jurisdiction. And we can provide a copy, you know, to that, to the board, but that, that's actually from Civic Clerk too. And then other outside agencies, why I'm just touching on those, if I could. We have a January 25th, 2021, uh, letter to the chairman of the planning board from the Somerset County Planning Board saying that since the application does not impact, uh, or adversely affect the county facility, the Somerset County Planning Board approves this project. And then there is also.
Did you see the, on the second page of the DRCC there where it says, like, the third paragraph from the top, from the bottom, the subdivision was exempt from the commission review because the project did not propose the creation of one acre of impervious surface coverage cumulative, blah, 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 um, which was the regulatory threshold in effect at the time, since repealed. That's on a DRCC report?
Right, and at the, ultimately at the bottom, the, the bold letters, the decision, their determination is exempt. And then they go on to say that the, this jurisdictional determination shall lap, and they have lapses, then there's two conditions, just that five years from the date of this exemption letter, and subject to some municipal approvals. Yeah, I think they're just citing in that paragraph above that how the, the, they're describing the course of action since 2008, where the, the DNR Canal Commission regs actually did change in 2009.
So, I mean, Mike Foley's report here is, it's not entirely correct. That, you know, stated that the application is exempt from the approval, just, there are some conditions to it. I mean, that's what the letter had said, right, basically?
Well, this, this DNR Canal Commission letter, the, the February 3rd, 2021, does say, we are exempt. Ultimately, though, it's just like any other outside agency, what, regardless of what this board does, doesn't really, uh, you know, get the applicant out of satisfying any and all outside agencies to do what they're doing. You know, when the house is constructed in the back, um, that applicant and the builder would have to comply with any and all regulations. that applicant and the builder would have to comply with any and all regulations, applicability from D N R, stormwater requirements, any application requirements to the building department and the engineering department of the township.
But, Mike, the fact of the matter remains that you did submit the application and the plans to D N R Canal Commission, and they issued the exemptions.
Correct.
Okay, I got that. And then just in terms of the trees, the applicant had said that they stated they planted approximately thirty however you say that, trees, conference?
Evergreen trees.
Evergreen trees?
Yeah.
Near the house, but the aerial shows that there's twenty-five trees in two rows. And is that in, you know, does that satisfy kind of the concept of what is going to be done in terms of the trees and the footage and the location? I know we talked about twelve shade trees, like, how does that kind of work together?
I think that the discussion at the environmental commission in that regard was that the owners of the property, the Briskys, really just wanted to make known to the environmental commission, and now we are to this board as well, that there wasn't an absence of any plantings since the two thousand eight rule. It's just that the twelve shade trees along Woods Road weren't planted. We're seeking relief from that, but that they did plant those evergreen trees.
So those are gonna stay?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to clarify that.
And the legal argument there is based on forty fifty-five D dash fifty-one, an exception, an exception in an application for subdivision on a local regulation. If it's reasonable and the general intent, purpose of the provisions of the review, if the little enforcement of one or more provisions of the ordinance is impracticable or will exact undo hardship because of peculiar conditions pertaining to the landed question. So I think the Brishiskeys are gonna tell the board, I don't want to speak for them, to steal their thunder, is that they planted these trees in lieu of the twelve trees that were originally required.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Mike? All right. I have no further questions of Mr. Ford.
I had a question about the trees. Are, are the twelve trees? What was the purpose of the twelve trees? And, sorry, composite question. When they're planted along the street, does, do they go into a different pool of trees?
The ordinance, and this goes back, obviously, but every, pretty much every application requires what we consider street trees. And if it were a tree mitigation plan, they wouldn't be counted towards mitigation. It's just a lining up the street with trees. Mr. Ford, do you have in your packet there or on, you have the aerial that you submitted? Can you pull that up on the screen, please? It might help the conversation a little bit.
Yeah, that actually relates to plantings.
Can you point where the plantings are that's being referred?
Yeah, this is, this is two thousand, January two thousand twenty, the Briskys planted the trees since this aerial was produced, and it's right, they're right here.
So it's towards the rear of the property.
It's, yeah, it's right out from the side of the house. They're not in the front where the shade trees would be. That's.
Like the aerial, it comes off the front left corner, basically.
Like right here. And they're like on a little burn.
And I think the Brishiskeys, Mr. Brishisky will address that issue further.
I think Mr. Ford made a comment earlier that, you know, Woods Road doesn't have a soldier row of trees. That's true, but there is appears from the aerial to be adequate space to supply them. It's up to the board. More trees, the better.
So were the trees supposed to be planted by the subdivider, the person who's asking for the variance to subdivider, by the owner of the house?
I didn't represent the subdivider at the time. Typically, I'll defer to the subdivision, but typically, any approval, the conditions attached to the applicant who would have been the subdivider. But you'll hear from Mr. Brishisky, and again, I don't want to steal his thunder. He didn't know anything about the subdivision. He didn't know anything about the requirements.
Well. Can I inject, if we just clarify who the original resolution was to Woods Road Associates LLC. Does that entity still exist?
No, there was a foreclosure.
Okay, thank you.
There was a foreclosure back, and then we informed the board by way of deeds, and we filed that with the application.
So the original resolution was agreed to by an entity that no longer exists?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's no additional. I'm gonna have a motion open to public. There's seconds.
Second.
All favor.
All right.
Okay, if anyone from the public, the two, if you would like to question Mr. Ford on his testimony, feel free to do. What? And I see no takers, so.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Mr. Brishisky, you want to address the board?
We're gonna square you in.
Just write a testimony you give tonight. It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, nothing of truth. Yes. Yeah, Brian Briskie Jr., B R Z Y.
Get the mic.
All right, Mr. I'm just gonna ask you one question, and then I'm gonna let you talk. You are with your parents, the owner of lot ten point zero two?
Yes. I purchased the house in two thousand and nine. I didn't know anything about the subdivision. Didn't know about the driveway closure or the trees or anything. And like to keep the driveway as long as I eliminate the perfect surface. Dangerous to back out of Woods Road, front driveway, so we was parked in the back at our entrance to our house. We used the back door all the time. So we all parked the cars in the back. But I do use the driveway. I keep cars in the garage.
Where about the trees?
I don't know about the trees either. Tree is a sidewalk. I don't know nothing about the subdivision, but I put those arboretis. I made like a barrier from the road to keep the backyard private, so.
And it is public record, and we displayed it before this board, and at some point, you obtained a zoning permit to relocate the driveway?
Yes.
Do you want to address that issue?
Yeah, I got a new septic system put in, and the septic, the septic tank was in the middle of the existing driveway. So they informed me that I gotta move the driveway. So my contractor told me to get a permit to move the driveway because he wouldn't do it without it. So I applied for it, got the permit, moved the driveway, and then he put the system in for me.
Any questions from the board? Okay, I guess, public. No questions? All right. I think we're done for now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public. Just by way of a brief closing, this is an old subdivision, a minor subdivision. The lot lines are changing. Clearly, there has been over the past fourteen years, that's when the subdivision was originally granted, and perfected. And I don't know how it got perfected, but it got perfected. Fourteen years later, we're back here to eliminate conditions purely to convey title. The applicant at the time is no longer in existence. Mr. Brishisky has told this board under oath that he knew nothing about any of the conditions of the prior subdivision approval. He did the right thing. He had two driveways when he purchased the property, when he was involved in the property, and the septic individual told him, I'm not gonna install a septic system. You do need a permit to move the driveway. What did he do? He didn't just install the driveway. He went to the town, he got a zoning permit. So I don't think you could visit on Mr. Brishisky any of those conditions. And the other condition that we're seeking relief from is merely a change in the law, and that's the affordable housing fee that's intended to all applications, including this particular application. Once again, the lot lines are changing. If there are any design waivers requested or exceptions, I think they fall within the fifty-five D dash fifty-one exception, which would indicate that they're reasonable and within the general purpose and intent of the subdivision approval. So with that, I would respectfully request that the conditions be deleted as requested, and forty-four Woods can be allowed to convey their lot after fourteen years.
Mr. Masky?
Just one clarification, I think, on condition number eight regarding the affordable housing, that wouldn't necessarily be a waiver. It would be more a requirement that they meet the current standards. You wouldn't be waiving the fee. It's just, they would now use the current standards.
I agree. It's just an update of the law.
And of course, an important part of this is that they would be reducing the impervious coverage overall to less than ten percent. Regardless of, that it's kind of unrelated to the waivers. It's a correction of a violation, if you will. They'll get the impervious coverage back below ten percent.
Okay. So who is paying the fee? Is it the applicant who's buying the property of so?
The affordable housing fee will be paid by the applicant, who, the owner of that property, ten point oh three. If, as and when they obtain a building permit, fifty percent at the time of building permit and fifty percent at the time of the certificate.
That's Brishiskeys.
No, the Brishiskeys would, no. If he wants to pay it, I don't.
No, I'm just clarifying that the person asking for the waiver is the person acquiring the subdivision.
That is correct. But again, that's not a waiver. They've got, hey, just bring it to standards. Right. It's a waiver of the preexistence. It's no longer legally effective.
So it is a waiver. But let's be.
Yeah, it's a waiver, but it's.
It's not a waiver, but it's a waiver, no. At the time, the application was approved, that was the fee. Your client is asking for it to be waived and to replace the then fee with a new fee that complies with the current law, but was not in effect at the time that this was approved.
I totally agree with Eric on that.
So what, what would be the amount to be paid? He said nineteen thousand six hundred. Do we know what that?
This was point five percent of what the equalized assessed value is of whatever house they decide to build back there.
So we wouldn't know that to the value of the house.
Correct.
Based on, you can do the math based on. Yeah. It's not nineteen. And in lieu of to the township sidewalk fund, you're asking that to go away?
I couldn't find any ordinance which has a sidewalk fund, so I would take the position that since there's no ordinance authorizing a sidewalk fund, that it would be not a legal requirement.
While I'm impressed by that argument, it's about thirteen plus years late. Right, so it would have been paid on time, it would have received. I mean, the argument that in two thousand twenty-two, I can't find anything that says you could require it in two thousand eight, while a very cogent argument is a little on the late side when it comes to the issue.
I'm not even sure it was in effect in two thousand and eight.
You're gonna have to, you can't. I don't have.
I do know. I've represented clients in the past before with this board, and everybody says, yeah, sidewalk fund.
You also currently and have previously represented municipal and other public entities, and you know that there's a point in time where even though it may or may not be legal, you're gonna have to argue what took so long.
But I also think that.
And spend the client's money to deal with.
I also think that the current client was not the former client.
Doesn't matter. As you're well aware, counselor, the current client assumes what the prior approvals were unless this board grants a waiver of the prior approvals, which is why you're here, because if that were the case, you wouldn't be here.
Seeking relief from conditions.
Right, and the conditions were those that got the approval in the first place for a prior client that your client is now looking to assume. So what you're asking for is for the board to waive the requirement. Whether there was a legal requirement fourteen years ago to have granted it is immaterial in terms of whether or not you can ultimately prove it if you want to spend time in Somerville dealing with it, which I assume you don't. It wouldn't be if you were, if you'd be here.
We're arguing that it's reasonable for the board to waive.
Right.
Prior requirement.
If you thought it was not something the board could or would waive, we wouldn't be here on that one.
It was submitted as a waiver request.
Correct.
Comments, thoughts? I think it's four points, four waivers?
I would point out to the board that they, our perception is they fall into different categories. The street trees, this board has heard a myriad of these applications over the years, having them, not having them. The neighborhood doesn't have them. I think they would probably desire X years ago. And I don't think there's anybody currently on the board who was there in two thousand eight except moi. And I don't recall whether there was desire to have street trees or not. So that's one issue. The impervious coverage issue is really not a waiver because apparently they're willing to meet the ordinance requirements that they didn't meet fourteen years ago. It's the affordable housing numbers. It's the sidewalk fund. And that's it. Which really have nothing whatsoever to do with tonight's application, except for the fact that they're problematic to the applicant.
What do you do? You take the old fee and put it on top of the new fee?
No, the old fee is what is still in existence. If this board chooses not to waive them or to waive and substitute, Mr. Lennis is asking for a waiver and a substitution on the affordable and a waiver of the sidewalk fee, correct, Mr. Rest? But the alternative.
The argument on the affordable housing fee is that the law has changed.
Right, but the law, again, the law has changed since then, not since, the law's changed since the approval.
Again, you're right. I do represent boards and municipalities, and on every application, I tell the applicant's attorney it's at the time you apply for the building permit. That's the law.
No, it's at the time you get the approval. And so argument is to that, because if you take that argument to its logical or illogical conclusion, if I wait and never build it until thirty years from now, there's no affordable housing fee, I don't have to pay it. And if you take Mr. Lennis's argument to its illogical conclusion, if you waive it today, and his client chooses to wait another several more years to build, and at that point, it's no longer one and a half percent of assessed valuation, it's now a dollar ninety-eight, I guarantee it may not be frank, somebody will argue it's a dollar ninety-eight.
And then again, it may be five million dollars.
I doubt that, right? Again, it's.
The point I'm trying to make is at the time you apply for the building permit. The applicant is desperate to sell the property and have somebody build the house, and I think the market is conducive to that.
I would make the suggestion that this twelve street trees be put into our trust fund. He doesn't want to, doesn't want to put the trees in, and the owner doesn't want the trees in the front, and since it was on the resolution, just donation to our tree fund, like any other applicant would. As far as the affordable housing number, I don't know how we.
I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm good with, yeah, but I'm, I'm a client, I mean, at the time, there was a reason for the fee to be that high. We're under different, you know, there were different rules. Things have changed. If they were coming brand new today, that's what it would be, one and a half. So I mean, I mean, we know what houses are going for. I mean, yes, it's not gonna get quite to nineteen, but we're not gonna get a dollar ninety-eight either at the end of the day. So it's like reduction.
Can you make it to pay at least that money, you know?
Well, will the applicant agree that if the board agrees to the waiver of one and a half, they will not contest, that will be the number? they will not contest, that will be the number paid at the time it meets the conditions? But the 1.5 will be set?
Mm-hmm.
And then, and then the third question is the sidewalk fund.
You don't want less money than what should have been paid.
I don't want less money than we pay to now.
Right. And, but, yeah, I mean, you don't know what's going to be built.
You don't want less money than what's rich. We know what the number is.
Well, my client is agreeable to that.
Okay.
Folks, I'll state that again, Mr. Linus, I didn't pick
My client is agreeable to the 1.5%, regardless as to the time the building permit is drawn.
No, we're just the floor going forward, so. That's fine.
The third is the sidewalk.
Well, I, I mean, there's, I mean, but my view from back then was there was probably some vision that Woods Road wasn't going to get sidewalks, where the neighborhood was going to pay for it one way or the other. You know, and, yeah, I haven't been on the committee for a while, so turn to our two representatives, if there's been any interest from the neighborhood to talk about, yeah.
Sidewalks on Woods Road, no.
Because, because I know there was at some time.
A requirement there.
Yes.
Use it for sidewalk.
It's part of this transaction.
Yeah.
What we do with all developments, we have that requirement. So you either have the sidewalks, you have a fund, you know, there's always a need for sidewalk work in the town. But I, I'm not as worried about the trees, only because they, you know, they did
I think that was all part of the vision for Woods Road.
Yeah, and they put in the other, you know, they have to put in the armpits, even though they're not on the main road, there, there was some planting that were done. So I'm not worried about that. Yeah, we'd rather see a little bit of contributions in the sidewalk fund.
What else? Comments?
Mr. Chairman, just, there was a fourth condition to remove the second driveway. Wait, they were asking.
I'm sorry, to remove the second?
Second driveway.
To remove it?
Required removal of the second driveway in the original approval, so that they're requesting for that driveway to remain.
Or at the, or at the
Waiver or reduction.
Yeah.
Right, they offset the driveway with the impervious.
Correct.
They offset the impervious, they're removing impervious to bring it down below the requirement to retain the driveway.
Right.
But the second driveway was supposed to be removed in the original application, the, the center one, the northern one.
Well, that went to the garage.
But that went to the garage, right?
And, and And then the testimony was that the Bruszkis went in and take the zoning permit to relocate the second driveway. That's what I think caused the impervious coverage situation, which is part of this application that would be reduced to 50%.
Yeah. I'm just, Eric, we have to open back up to the public for one last. So why don't we do that real quick?
So?
You know, open back up to the public for the final comments. We didn't close, did we? No, we're still open. So, so public, you have one last shot at giving us your thoughts on this application. And I see two head shakes, so the public is done. Okay, so, all right.
Lot of stuff going on there.
Definitely. So, Mr. Chairman, you want to go through this one, one item at a time? And maybe, you know, make some sort of decisions, the 12 trees along Woods Road?
Right.
Any?
Anyone against the waiver?
Everyone's good with that waiver, or?
I personally am okay with that.
Yeah, I kind of like, you know, what Delcor said, that they already did some remediation work, so.
Because that would waive the 12 trees, the driveway is an easy one. Changing the, the affordable housing contribution to the current 1.5%.
As a floor.
You're in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Contribution of $7,700 to the sidewalk fund, get your name?
There's, there's no sidewalks there now, they're not going to happen, Mike. The sidewalk fund will go into us to repair sidewalks around the town, so it's not to put in sidewalks in lieu of putting
But is that, do we collect all the time? I mean, I'm not, yeah, because
Okay.
Yeah, you're, they, they still, do they still need to contribute to $7,700 or not?
Well, we, if, if we don't have the sidewalk fund, where would be, they'd have to contribute to the general.
We have had a fund in the past, I'm not sure how official it is, but I believe it's empty at the moment.
There are, we just
Let it go. Okay. It waves that contribution. Removing the northerly driveway, or just leaving the driveways as they are, given the, with the reduction of the impervious coverage. Just waive that one, waive that one. Okay?
But one, one question, though. Was that an original approval, or was that part of the approval when the permit was granted?
I think the original approval required the removal of that driveway. Bruszkis, that was in 2008, Bruszkis came into play, I think he said in 2011 or thereabouts, where, when, when the property had the two driveways, he knew nothing about the condition.
Okay.
And then something went wrong with the septic system, and that required the relocation of the driveway, the second driveway. He went to the town and got a permit for the relocation of the second driveway. So ever since Bruszkis has been on site at that house, it has had to drive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But as, as part of the permit approval, or there was no requirement, that was back from the original approval.
Yes, and for whatever reason, and I'm not sure what it was architecturally or whatever, they were going to change the front-facing garage and make it a side-entry garage, which means that driveway would have come out, because there would be no more garage doors there.
Yeah, it was, I'm not sure what that was for.
My point is, the Briskies have complied with what they were required as part of the permit approval.
From the zone. Well, they, they chose not to reverse or to change the orientation of the garage for whatever reason. That's what that was all about.
Right, that's also part of the condition that was seeking a waiver from the shifting of the front garage.
Which, which would have triggered the removal of the one driveway if you changed the doors.
Right, it's, it's all contained in item 10.
Okay, yeah.
So.
Okay, so, no additional trees, the affordable housing contribution would be 1.5%, no sidewalk contribution, and just as basically a straight waiver on number 10. And the impervious coverage would be reduced to 9.9% on lot 10.02.
Right, and the 1.5%, though, you know, I mean, that's
On the affordable, on the new house in the back.
Regardless of whenever it gets built.
Right.
Going to be, so.
Got it all?
Okay, so with that, if everyone followed, do I have a motion for, for those waivers and changes, or maybe changes and waivers?
We were saying, or the denials of waivers.
Correct. I'll make that motion. The way you said it.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any final comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Ethan?
Yes.
Travis Tagg?
Yes.
Committee man Delcor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Delcor.
Anywhere? Okay, so with that, what do we, I know, gave me a cheat sheet, I guess.
Next meeting is May 12, right?
That's going to be, we have two, oh, no, no, one's being moved.
So, May, May 12 is the Homestead Road
It's the Homestead Road Warehouse Project, so.
Possibly, possibly a resolution.
Okay, okay. So with that, and then we have a May 26 business, well, we can address that next week.
That's a business meeting, nothing on it. The next meeting after that would be June 2nd, where we do have an application.
Right. Okay.
All right.
So with that, may I have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
One favor. I, we're adjourned to everyone next week.
If you could log out of the Chromebooks, so the next person will